Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, November 14, 2006. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Bill De La Peña, present. Councilmember Irwin. Councilmember Glancy is absent. Mayor Gillette.
Here. Item four, Special Announcements and Requests for Continuance of Any Public Hearing or Agenda Item. There being none. Okay, with council concurrence, if we have speakers on, and I believe we will, under public comments, I'd like to move 11C, the Resident Ballet designation, up on the agenda. Okay? Okay, thank you. Okay. Item five, Special Presentations. And I'll go down to the podium for that. Could I ask Nancy Kilborn to join me down here? Our proclamation for this evening is for November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And I'd like to ask Nancy Kilborn, Chairman of the American Indian Committee's Caneo Valley Chapter, who's here to receive the proclamation, and tell us more about the National American Indian Heritage Month. Nancy, if you would, please.
The National Society Daughters of the Revolution is very much involved in American Indian education and in healthcare services. We are very active at the national, state, and local level. I am the Chair for the Local Chapter, Caneo Valley Chapter, NSDAR. And as such representing the chapter, I want to say thank you very much for honoring our Native Americans this month. Thank you.
Nancy, thank you. Kind of interesting. Last March, I happened to be in Washington, DC, and went to the new Smithsonian Indian Museum.
That's a good one.
And it's phenomenal, the things that are in there, fascinating, interesting. I was struck with one thing, though, and I went down and asked at the reference desk, there is no reference to the Chumash anywhere in the museum. And I thought that's unfortunate. I recognize there are a number of other indigenous peoples that were probably...
They got left out.
Left out, but...
There's a lot of tribes got left out. For some reason, they're still there, they're still tribes, but they haven't been nationally recognized.
I see. Okay, well, we know that, we'll have to work on that then.
Yes, we shall.
Okay. Well, anyhow, this proclamation is in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. And the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of the rich legacy throughout the United States. And Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities, have been planned. Now therefore, I, Dennis C. Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 2006 as National American Indian Heritage Month, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thank you. I would like to say that you will be honoring the Native Americans when you have your Thanksgiving dinner, because the foods that we have for Thanksgiving are Native American foods. The corn, the cornbread, the sweet potatoes, and the turkey. Those were all developed on this continent by Native Americans for your enjoyment.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. At this time, we've called the Public Comments section of our agenda. Item six, would the clerk please call the item?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on the subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, and remarks directed at a particular council member are not allowed. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda, and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council on the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Four people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening is Brad Murville. Mr. Murville, if you'd please come forward, and as suggested by, recommended by the city clerk, please give your name and community of residence. Thank you.
The one in front of me? Okay, thank you. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak, council members and mayor. I'm here this evening to discuss a topic on, actually, let me state my name. I'm Brad Murville. I'm a six-year resident of Thousand Oaks and a member of ETI Corral 37, which is Equestrian Trails Incorporated. And to remind you of what that is, it's a national organization. Corral 37 is a local chapter, and it represents the, or it preserves the representation of open space and trails, and also the equestrian way of life. But my message tonight is not just to equestrians and for the equestrian community, it's for the entire community. And it's in response to a recent article that was published by the Thousand Oaks Acorn regarding the termination of the Caneo Valley Days Rodeo and the Parade. My testimony is a bit different from some people who might have been here for many years. I'd like to say that I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks or Caneo Valley for decades. Unfortunately, as I say, it's only been six years. I grew up and was born and raised in the San Fernando Valley. And over the 40 years that I've lived there, I watched that area completely change. And it did once have the great pride and spirit that the city has. We had venues and entities and events like the parade and like the rodeo that helped represent the pride that the community had. Little by little, I watched that disappear over the years, and it was replaced with concrete and with the gangs and the violence, till eventually I decided that there must be a better place to live for my family and my children, to raise my children. Thousand Oaks is ideal. And only being 20 miles away, it's amazing, because it seems that it's hundreds of miles away. We have the spirit of a small-town community anywhere across the country. Part of that spirit comes from this great entity of the Caneo Valley Days, the rodeo and the parade. It's a great representation. What I want to emphasize about it is that the spirit of the last 50 years is something that we need to be able to try to work towards and maintain. I know that we have resources available to us, such as, there's a lot of corporations in the area that would probably want to help contribute. We just don't want to turn it over and give up and say that there's nothing we can do at this point. We need to approach people like the Amgens, the Countrywides, the Oaks Malls, the Auto Malls, and see if we can rally together, instead of just turning over and saying that this is something that is in the past, in the name of progress. It's not in the name of progress. It's something that's a heritage that we're very proud of and would want to continue. I ride in the parade, my wife rides in the parade, my daughter rides in the parade, and I want to see my grandchildren ride in that parade as well. And I just want to say that if we don't do anything to try to maintain this, and if we don't act now, Thousand Oaks is going to lose a lot more than just the rodeo and the parade. We need to do everything that we possibly can to work together with the city council and other entities to hope that we can maintain this. Anyway, thank you for your time, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Richard Williams, followed by Mary Lee Elman.
Good evening. I'm Richard Williams from Newbury Park. I'd like to begin by congratulating those members of the city council who were reelected in this last election. I wish you all the best in your celebrations for this city, and I know it was a very tough campaign. I think you all were deserving of being reelected, and I want to congratulate you tonight, as I'm sure many others have already. I'm here to speak on two things. One of them is, in September, we had our third annual Thousand Oaks Arts Festival. And I know some of you were able to come to the festival. I wish you all would come again next year, as we will have one next year. It was an outstanding event. It was, the attendance was at least as good as the year before. We actually maxed out the structured parking on Sunday. And so it was a very well-attended event. We hope to even do better next year, and we're looking forward to that with your support. And that ties into the other comment I want to make, and that's in support of Lori Sorensen and the Pacific Theater Ballet to be a resident company at the Civic Arts Plaza. My experience with Lori has been on the committee for the Thousand Oaks Arts Festival, and she's been a member for each of its three years. In the last two years, has been the Chair of the Entertainment or the Performing Arts Committee. And she has worked very hard to get a broad spectrum of performing arts to fill up the two days of the opportunity to present and celebrate those performing arts for our festival. And she has dedicated herself to that, and has been a very strong supporter of the Arts Festival and as a volunteer, and as all of us are. So it was, I would be more than happy to offer my support for her and the Pacific Theater Ballet for recognition to be the resident company for our theater. And with that, I thank you, and I hope that you voted favorably for her.
Mary Lee Elman, and while Ms. Elman is coming up. While I appreciate your enthusiasm about different items that come before us, we encourage you to refrain from applause. All it does is slow the process down. We're trying to hear each of the speakers and move through the agenda in a timely manner. And so I'd really appreciate it if you'd respect that. Thank you very much. Ms. Elman?
Mary Lee Elman, resident of Thousand Oaks since 1962. I'm going to reiterate some of the things that Brad covered, but I want to put a big exclamation point after this. For the last three years, I've been historian for a local corral 37 of equestrian trails. Because of this volunteer position, I've been exposed to and come to value the fascinating history of this relatively new and very nurturing town of Thousand Oaks. I also want many, I along with many other nimby's or environmentalists, have over the years fought the gallant fight to preserve some of the things that have become traditional and of great value to our quality of life here. The day I read, "We will no longer have a parade or rodeo," was a very harsh blow to the spirit that drives me to volunteer my time and service for the diversity of this multifaceted community. Five generations of my family participated in the parade and some in the rodeo with our horses. I have pictures of my kids, who are now in their 40s, with Walter Brennan when they were with the Indian maidens. Now I have grandsons that ride in my miniature horse's car and look forward to it every year. Through ETI, Equestrian Trails Drill Team at the rodeo, and grouping with other horsemen and women at the parade was the best way to share our horses with the community. The kids and the adults won many trophies and awards at these events that have become lifetime treasures. And this participation has given them pride in their accomplishments and joy to those who don't or aren't able to have horses. Even at the Caneo Creek Equestrian Park, at Jan's Road, you'd have to see the people who go by and point out the horses to their kids, who smile with delight and wave at the sight of the horses. On January 6, 2007, Equestrian Trails was to celebrate our golden anniversary, our 50th year in Thousand Oaks, an accomplishment to persevere 50 years since even before the birth of Thousand Oaks. Can you imagine the shock and the dismay when we found out there will be no parade and rodeo to celebrate this important landmark year with our organization and with the members of our horse community? I want you to know, even Westlake has a beautiful publication they put out, and "Living the Equestrian Dream" was the theme of this, not this month, but it was August and September. And throughout the magazine, they highlight the equestrian community that's in Thousand Oaks, with a lot of our veterinary services, some of the Olympian people. I know we had somebody at the Kentucky Derby from Westlake. And the Caneo Valley Parade also is mentioned in the Westlake Magazine as a highlight of this most valuable thing we have in our community. So, boy, do I hate to lose that. So thank you for listening, and hopefully, people can rally to try to keep and preserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Kloster, followed by Diane Mariville.
Barbara Kloster, Thousand Oaks. Mayor Gillette, council members and staff. As you all know, I'm appalled to, as a 33-year resident, an equestrian advocate, and a person who truly loves being a part of the Caneo Valley. I am an equestrian, trying to keep the equestrian way of life alive. It goes without saying as to how upset I was to hear that the Committee for Caneo Valley Days has decided that the parade and rodeo would be canceled. If they were replacing them with something better, I don't think it would have made as much of an impact as it has. What is wrong with preserving the history of our town? It has been a tradition that has gone on for 50 years and was enjoyed by many. If there were more people in the parade than watching it, whose fault is that? Maybe the parade was not promoted enough, and possibly the lack of parking had something to do with it. My heart goes out to all the youth groups that have participated in the past, but will not be able to do it again. How else can the Indian Guides, the Brownies, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the Drill Teams, the Cheer and Dance Groups, and all the others that looked forward to it before show off what they had accomplished to their families and friends? I realize that times have changed. I didn't want to get old and gray, but I did. And that doesn't mean that I want to be put out to pasture. Let us hold on to the old and incorporate some of the new. They did it last year with the bike races and had a packed crowd at the rodeos. I always believed in that old saying, "If it ain't broke, why fix it? Where there is a will, there is a way." Please, in your infinite wisdom, help us hold on to the past and look forward to the new. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Mariville, followed by, I think it's Denny Schomhauser.
I'm Diana Murville, resident of Thousand Oaks. And thank you, esteemed council, for taking the time to hear us today. I'm talking about the topic that previous people have spoken of, which is trying to save the CBD rodeo and parade. And my husband and I moved here six and a half years ago out of the San Fernando Valley, because we wanted to raise our now three children in a community that's more rural, and celebrating the western heritage that we follow. We're equestrians as well, with horses in our backyard. And we've always been actively participating in the CBD rodeo and parade. I myself ride in the ETI Corral 37 Drill Team, and it's been really a highlight of my life to be able to perform in that rodeo and be part of that. That's something that I'll never forget, and that's something that this community has allowed me to do, which is something I'd never be able to do anywhere else. And something that makes this community different from the San Fernando Valley, which is the reason we moved out here. And as far as the parade goes, we've always ridden in the parade as well. In fact, last year, our then-seven-year-old daughter Leah took the Youth Equestrian Award. And that's something that she'll never forget. That's something that will be with her forever. And again, that's something that this community gave her because of the parade that we had. And that's something that we don't have in other areas. And again, something that makes this community special. And CBD is supposed to be commemorating the history of Caneo Valley. And motocross and what they want to replace the rodeo with is not part of the history of 50 years ago, of this community that was made up of ranchers and shepherds. And that's going to go away, and people are going to forget what Caneo Valley was. And that's what the whole point of the Caneo Valley Days Rodeo and Parade is to commemorate the history of this. And we're going to lose it, and we're going to become just another San Fernando Valley. And that's not what we want. That's why I think all of us moved out here, was to keep that rural feel. And the parade is important not only to the equestrian community, but to all the high schools that send bands and cheerleaders, and even the tiny tots that compete in the tiny tot pageant. Where are they going to display themselves now? They used to go out in a truck in the parade, ride on a float, and be part of the rodeo. And now, what's going to be the meaning of even the tiny tots competition if they've got nowhere now to display what they're representing, again, which is the whole history of western heritage of Caneo Valley? So all those things are going to just slowly fade away, and we'll just blend in with the rest of the San Fernando Valley and lose what makes us special. And the carnival will become just like any other city carnival. It won't have that special western heritage to it. So we just want to plead that maybe if the city council could help the community and support us, in helping us either find a way to raise funds through some of the larger corporations in the area, whatever it takes to keep the rodeo and parade alive. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Donnie Schmehauser. Donnie, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. It's a little hard to read your handwriting, honey, so why don't you give us your name?
Danny Schmehauser.
Okay, great. Please, go ahead.
I basically lived in Thousand Oaks for my whole, like, basically my whole life. And we basically moved here because it was for horses and to be around them. So we were looking forward to the parade and the rodeo, and I've been in it for like three years. And me and my horse both enjoy that. And you guys are taking it away. And I'm going to be really sad.
Donnie, thank you very, very much. I know that's not easy sometimes, but we do appreciate you taking the time and coming down and talking to us tonight. Thank you. That concludes our Public Comments section. Item seven, Redevelopment, City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Pleasure of the council. I am going to recuse myself from item 7I, consistent with past recousals. So, pleasure the council with everything but 7I.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Have a motion? Comment to the motion? There being none, please vote.
And the ordinance title for 7A is Ordinance Amending Sections 6-2.101, 6-2.3.02, 6-2.501, and 6-2.502 of the Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste, Green Waste, and Recyclable Material Collection Processing and Disposal. And the motion carries 4-0. Councilmember Glancy absent, and Mayor Gillette recused on 7I.
So we're good? We don't need another motion?
You don't, I think everything went but 7I. Do we need a separate motion on that?
Sorry.
May I ask the mayor pro temp to take 7I?
Sure. Okay, I'll move the item 7I in the consent.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you. Okay, before we start our public hearings, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, retasking item 11C, Resident Ballet Designation, and... Tom, are you going to take that? Mr. Metz, for staff on 11C.
Thank you, Mayor Gillette, members of the city council. Before you is a recommendation of the Board of Governors and the Vice Chair of the Board of Governors. Eloise Cohen is here to actually make that presentation to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Cohen?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette and city council members. I'm Eloise Cohen, Westlake Village, and proud to say 43-year resident of Caneo Valley. And I am here tonight to ask for your support for item 11C in designating the Pacific Festival Ballet Company as the Resident Ballet of the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. The Board of Governors has accepted the recommendation of the Ad-Hoc Residency Committee in making this decision. Both parties that applied for residency were interviewed and given a full evaluation by the committee. And at their September 27, 2006 meeting, the Board of Governors unanimously and enthusiastically voted to recommend that the city council designate the Pacific Festival Ballet as Resident Ballet at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza.
Are there any questions of Mrs. Cohen?
Miss Bill De La Peña.
Good evening, Mrs. Cohen.
Good evening.
There is another ballet company who also would like to be considered for residency. And I was wondering what, if you could describe the difference between the Pacific Festival Ballet and the Cunejo, I believe it is called, the Cunejo Civic Ballet?
Both of the companies were interviewed, and the Ad-Hoc Committee interviewed them. Both of the companies were interviewed, and the ad hoc committee interviewed them based on the criteria for residency, and felt obviously that the Pacific Ballet fit the criteria better. But since both are professional organizations, I prefer not to go on public record to try to differentiate what one or the other does. I think perhaps they might be representatives here of those companies that might want to speak.
Is it possible to have two residency ballet companies?
You'd have to ask Tom Mitzi that question, I believe so.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mrs. Cohen? Did you, Miss Speldele, opinion? Are you done?
Well, no. If Mr. Mitzi could perhaps answer that question, or should we just...
Would you mind staying up there for just a minute, Mrs. Cohen?
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Mitzi, would you answer the question, please?
Yes, it is possible. There is not a mutually exclusive arrangement, so you could have two resident dance companies. And I'd like to point out that residency does not provide a break in rent or scheduling priority. It's really a stamp of approval. It helps the companies in their fundraising. It is a, you know, it's like the U.S. Grade A stamp. So, yes, it is very possible to have two resident companies.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitzi, let me ask you one question. Does, you're the professional in this area and the people you work with, does having more than one company minimize or trivialize the significance of having a company with this designation?
I don't believe it would trivialize it. Companies are different kinds of companies. They each excel in what they do. So, other performing arts centers have other names. Some of them call them artistic partners, or a resident company is just one of several names. It's a way of recognizing consistency of performance and artistic excellence. So, I don't think that that would minimize anything.
Thank you. Mr. Fox, you had a question?
Thanks. I'm not quite sure if Ms. Cohen or Mr. Mitzi would be best for this. It seems to me that we've gone through, I don't know if it was for the same thing, but a similar process in years past where we asked the Board of Governors to make a recommendation to the council. Could you provide some more information on that? I don't know if Eloise is best to do it, or Tom.
I would be happy to address it. That is correct. The Board of Governors actually has recommended several different companies to be resident. Both the New West Symphony and the Cabrillo Civic Light Opera are resident orchestra and resident civic light opera. Several years ago, the Board recommended that the Pacific Festival Ballet Nutcracker become the resident nutcracker of the Civic Arts Plaza. With this particular motion, that would be withdrawn. It would no longer be a resident nutcracker, but the Pacific Festival Ballet itself would be a resident ballet company.
In each one of those cases, those, I believe, came to the council, but we were acting on recommendations from the Board of Governors, were we not?
That's correct.
And, again, I don't have all the, I don't recall all the details, but some of these were, in effect, some competing artists, if you will, where the Board of Governors set up criteria, established a selection procedure, and then made a recommendation to the council. Isn't that...
That is, that is correct. In the case of the New West Symphony, there was not another symphony, so there really wasn't competition.
Right.
And the same thing with the Civic Light Opera. With the ballet companies, it was different, because there are a number of dance studios in the area that actually perform on a regular basis, but I believe only two of them have separate ballet companies that are separate nonprofit performance groups.
Okay, very good. And then, Ms. Cohen, just on behalf of the council and the Board of Governors, these are difficult decisions that are, in a sense, our citizens make, whether it's the endowment that we have in terms of community facilities and programs, or in this particular case, making a recommendation for a resident ballet. And I know that the deliberations and the work that goes into these, these decisions are not easy, and so we appreciate the time and effort that you and the committee and the Board of Governors put in, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. We do have cards on this, but Mr. Mitzi, again, and perhaps, Ms. Cohen, one last. If one of the options available to us is to name two companies, can you share with us the, whatever reasoning or whatever discussion took place, why the Board of Governors didn't come forward with that kind of a recommendation? There has to be a reason why the Board of Governors has recommended one, and I'm trying to get, one company. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get a sense of that.
Well, that's why, I guess, we have that ad hoc residency committee, so they go through the process and the criteria of interviewing and evaluating these organizations that are applying for residency, and so we relied on their interview process and their recommendation that they felt they fit the criteria better and made that recommendation, not that, you know, the other company isn't also a good company, but we relied on them going through the process, and...
If I can add to that.
Mr. Mitzi.
It wasn't that they decided that one of the companies was not a good company. Eloise is absolutely right. It's a subjective call. The Pacific Festival Ballet has been very active in supporting fundraising activities at the Civic Arts Plaza. They are a large company. They have commissioned some world premieres, which have been very exciting. They do, well, both companies now do a nutcracker, but they really pioneered the nutcracker. They also do a spring show, so they have more impact. They're a larger company, and they do more performances.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cohen.
Before I'm timed, I'm passing out a letter that I don't think reached you in time. It's a personal endorsement from Richard Carpenter. Beautiful letter. Good evening. My name is Lori Sorensen, a resident of Westlake Village, Ventura County, and I'm Vice President and Treasurer of Pacific Festival Ballet. This is Emiko Flanagan, a seventeen-year-old senior, and Emiko has trained at our studio, the California Dance Theater, for thirteen years, and she's the $5,000 winner of the Richard Carpenter Scholarship Competition in the High School Division held just last month. Twenty-one years ago, my partners and I opened the doors of the California Dance Theater, and a few years later, our nonprofit ballet company was established. We've been passionate about our dream and our goal and our mission to develop a resident ballet company at our world-class Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. And in nineteen ninety-four, when our state-of-the-art facility became a reality, it gave us the opportunity to embrace support and nurture the dance community in the Caneo Valley and surrounding areas. As you know, in two thousand and three, we were honored when the Board of Governors named us resident nutcracker, but in May of two thousand and six, we asked the Board of Governors to consider naming us the resident ballet company, as we have put the world of ballet and Thousand Oaks on the map with other story ballets in addition to our highly acclaimed nutcracker. We have presented our classics, of course, Sleeping Beauty, Swan Lake, and Cinderella, but we have brought to life Peter Pan, Bambi, The Secret Garden, Heaven and Hell, The Journey, Bob Selvin's magnificent score, and just last year, Mary Poppins, for which we received another commendation from our great city of Thousand Oaks. So on September twenty-seventh, as you heard, the ad hoc residency committee reviewed all of our qualifications and the criteria, and unanimously voted and recommended to the Board of Governors that we be named resident ballet company. And their vote was based on our size, our quality, our consistency, our caliber, our content, our professionalism, and the reputation of our company, and we have consistently performed on the Cavali stage. What makes us unique is that we have a strong base of talented dancers. We train twelve hundred students per week at the California Dance Theater and eighteen thousand square feet of spacious studios. In fact, one of our studios was built and designed to be the same size as the Cavali. We have generated nearly $2 million in ticket sales, and a hundred and twenty thousand school children have enjoyed field trips to our ballets over the years. We have inspired children with our productions and enjoy our exceptional relationship with the Alliance for the Arts and the Kids in the Arts. Our ballet company and its two principals, artistic director Kim Miselli and I, will continue to create the synergy between the Alliance for the Arts and Civic Arts Plaza. Our community involvement has been discussed tonight, my involvement with the three arts festivals, and Kim and I have been members of the Alliance for five years. We have another brand-new world premiere original ballet coming up in May of two thousand and seven, titled The Sea Princess. My very talented partner, Kim Miselli, has been working over eight months with the Malibu composer Eric Olman on his original score. We have worked hard, very hard, for twelve and a half years for this designation. Your endorsement tonight will fulfill our dream. It will greatly help in our marketing strategies and in seeking grant monies and corporate donations. We will continue to advance the art of dance in our region. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Ann Mathias, Thousand Oaks. I'm a huge supporter of the arts here in Thousand Oaks, as you have allowed me to be one of the art commissioners, but I am here tonight as a parent and a friend of the Caneo Civic Ballet Company, and had been asked by my friend Sue Hostetler to read her letter for you, for she has lost her voice. The purpose of this letter is to request the council's approval of the Caneo Civic Ballet Company as one of the two resident dance companies at the Civic Arts Plaza. This small but excellent nonprofit company has been performing at the Civic Arts Plaza since its grand opening, when they presented a scene from Swan Lake on the Cavali stage. When the residency issue first came before the Board of Governors, there were four nonprofit dance companies in the area. Today, only two remain, and both are seeking to be named a resident dance company. The Caneo Civic Ballet Company has a long history of community involvement ever since it was formed in nineteen seventy-four. At that time, it was known as the Caneo Junior Ballet Company and was granted nonprofit status. When the Civic Arts Plaza opened, the name was changed to the Caneo Civic Ballet Company to reflect the company's increased commitment to the community, and the nonprofit status was retained. Their season begins with a performance of the Nutcracker on the Cavali stage. In February, they present an introduction to dance performance for all the second-grade students of the Caneo Valley Unified School District, also in the Cavali. The season concludes in May with performances of story ballets in the Sheer Form Theater. Past performances included Swan Lake, Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs, Pequita, La Fille Magrada. A full-length Sleeping Beauty ballet will be presented this coming May. Maybe we can ask Mayor Gillette to reprise his role as the king when Mr. Sellers' daughter danced in the performance. My friend Sue is an employee of the Caneo Valley Unified School District Multimedia Center, and it is her task to help facilitate the performance for the second-grade students every year. After each production, she hears reviews from the teachers and the chaperones telling us how much the students enjoyed it. The Civic Arts Plaza is home to the Caneo Civic Ballet Company, and naming it a resident company will not only be a great honor but also will help the company in its fundraising and grant application efforts. With increased funding, they will be able to add the number of performances at the Civic Arts Plaza and reach wider audiences. In conclusion, resident status would benefit both dance companies and allow them to bring the world of dance to even larger audiences. And I also want to add, I was at that meeting September twenty-sixth, and as far as each of the criterias, each of the dance companies meet each individual one of them. The only difference would be the fundraising and the money that the Pacific Festival Ballet gives to the Cavali Theater, and that was not one of the criterias on the form that they've given us. So, hope you guys consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Trowalski. Did I get close? Okay. Followed by our final speaker, Cindy Borbus.
Good evening. I am Robin Trowalski, Director of the Caneo Civic Ballet Company. Our company has been a resident of Thousand Oaks for over thirty-two years. It was started in nineteen seventy-four by Gloria Connolly, and she retired about ten years ago, and I took over at that time. Ballet Arts, our affiliated school, has been training dancers since nineteen sixty-two. That is a forty-four-year history in the Thousand Oaks area. I believe Ballet Arts was the first dance studio in Thousand Oaks, and the fact that it is still going strong attests to its stability and success. We are currently adding an additional sixteen thousand square feet studio to our premises. I am proud to say that Caneo Civic Ballet Company is a viable part of this community. We present the talented members of this community several opportunities to perform each year. We present our annual nutcracker, and as part of our community involvement, we present two performances of introduction to dance, which Ann had mentioned, for all of the second-grade students in the Caneo Valley. Each May, we present two more performances of classical ballets, and this year's selection is Tchaikovsky's Sleeping Beauty. We provide free tickets to financially disadvantaged families because we feel strongly that the arts should be enjoyed by everyone regardless of their financial situation. I have reviewed the requirements for resident status and know that Caneo Civic Ballet Company meets each and every one of them. I would like you to consider Caneo Civic Ballet Company as resident dance company. We will continue to provide professional quality, full-length ballets for the entertainment of our community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Cindy Borbus.
Good evening. Mayor Gillette, council. I am Cindy Borbus. I'm a ten-year resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm the Production Coordinator for the Caneo Civic Ballet Company. I'm also the General Manager of Ballet Arts. More important than that, I'm a proud mom of four kids, two of which are members of CCBC, Caneo Civic Ballet Company. I've been associated with CCBC for over five years now and loved every minute of it. Robin Trowalski and I enjoy a great working relationship and have together developed many new and exciting changes to ballet arts. This directly affects the Caneo Civic Ballet Company. It makes perfect sense. Better training increases better dancers. Our enrollment alone has increased over thirty-five percent over the past few years. Over ninety percent of our students take multiple classes, and of that percentage, over sixty percent are with us every single day. Training with the very best, our professional staff, Ava Pacorni, Helena Pacorni-Jones, and Brett Vaidlich. They dedicate themselves each day to develop top talent to perform with CCBC, bringing with them a rich tradition of the Russian ballet. I can't say enough about these individuals that make up our ballet staff. I have witnessed over the years, young girls, my own included, at times awkward in appearance, tripping over feet as they grow, and then one day, literally, before our eyes turn into graceful swans performing on the Cavali stage. It's a beautiful thing to witness and to be a part of. My heart is lifted each time I hear the haunting music of Swan Lake or the waltz of the flowers in Nutcracker. It leaves me the question, why limit our community to only one recognized resident company? It is a blessing to the community to have two fine companies in one community. I don't feel that this is a contest. I feel that the community is a winner to have such great talent for them to have at the theater. No matter the outcome here, the Caneo Civic Ballet Company, we're not going to dance off into the sunset. We're going to keep on pressing on. The process has made our resolve stronger to be the best possible offering for our community in which we are named after. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers on this item. We have sixteen... We have sixteen written statement cards. Fifteen of the cards are pro-support of the residency of Pacific Festival Ballet, and one is supportive of Cano Civic Ballet Company as the end recommends the consideration for both companies for residency. Okay. Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was thoroughly impressed with the presentations for both the Pacific Festival Ballet as well as the Cano Civic Ballet, and was somewhat disturbed to hear that there used to be four ballet companies in our community, and now it's down to two. I feel very strongly that the city does have an obligation to try to support, not necessarily financially, but simply with our endorsement, the two remaining ballet companies which we have. It will enrich the culture of our own community and will present entertainment as well, and therefore, I would like to make a move and make a motion to actually grant residency status to both companies.
Motion. Comments to the motion? Mr. Fox?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to speak against the motion, not so much with respect to the Cano Civic Ballet or the Pacific Festival Ballet. I don't think the council's in a position to make an informed decision on this issue. That's why we appoint citizen committees to do the legwork, do the in-depth study, and that's exactly what's occurred here. We have enjoyed a very good, long-term relationship with the Board of Governors. This council relies on the Board of Governors for any number of decisions that they make. Included in the staff report on page 211 outlines the residency criteria. It appears clear that the Board of Governors and their ad hoc committee established criteria. It was a fair and open process that provided both ballet companies the opportunity to put their best foot forward, so to speak. And I think, from my perspective, this is more one of process than it is picking sides. And I think council needs to be considerate of the work that these citizen groups put in, and absent some overwhelming evidence that something's gone, you know, seriously astray with respect to process, I think the council owes it to the Board of Governors in this particular case to look at their recommendation and give it a vote of support. In addition, I'm moved by the letter from Mr. Carpenter, and I don't think anybody would disagree that Mr. Carpenter, I'm sure, is asked to write many letters of recommendation and endorsement. In this particular case, he decided to write a letter of endorsement for Pacific Festival Ballet. I'm sure there are many reasons that, and it has been stated here tonight, why the Board of Governors made the decision that they made. Both groups are professional. Both groups can do a good job, but clearly, and we also have testimony tonight, that the Board of Governors was aware that they could choose two resident ballets, so they knew that. And notwithstanding that information, they made a recommendation to the council that we need to go in a direction and make the appointment to the Pacific Festival. And so, I think council needs to really think through these issues. Unless we're willing to sit in these interviews personally and get the in-depth information that you need to make an informed decision, then I think we need to rely on the citizen groups that we asked to put the time and the effort in to make these recommendations. So, I ask for a no vote on this motion.
Thank you. Mrs. Yellen?
It's obvious that we are very fortunate in this community to have two excellent ballet companies, and I don't think whether one or the other is chosen as the residence group that it will determine whether they succeed or not. I agree with Mr. Fox. There are, we ask the experts to make the decision, and it's, unless there are some criteria, and I haven't heard sufficient reason tonight to go against the recommendations of the ad hoc residency committee and the Board of Governors. They use specific criteria. I'm sure they went through deliberations to come up with their recommendation for who should be the resident company. And personally, I think it dilutes the distinction to have two companies. Hopefully, if, you know, in the future, maybe you can go through this process again and see if things have changed, but right now, I think it's very important to go along with the recommendation of, like I said, the experts.
Thank you. I absolutely support the city's efforts over the years to impanel boards, commissions, and panels that provide advice and counsel to the city council, and I respect that. If we're not, if I'm not inclined to follow their advice, and I probably should be inclined to change the participants in those, on those panels. The Board of Governors' recommendation, the staff recommendation, the comments that we've heard from both sides, there's a great deal of mutual respect for both of these organizations, and it's not a competition between the two. The Board of Governors were placed in a position of identifying a company. The Board of Governors decided not to recommend two companies, and I am very concerned about spreading the significance of that designation with other art with more than one organization. I think it speaks to the prestige and the credibility of the programs that emanate from this institution of arts within our community. And I, too, was very impressed with Mr. Carpenter's letter, that he would see fit to express a comment on this. So, I'm not going to support the motion. It's for those reasons, and it certainly has nothing to do with the quality of the Pacific Company, but it has everything to do with the quality of the institution and the advice and counsel that this council receives from its advisory groups. Mrs. Bill De La Pena, maker of the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has a wonderful opportunity to embrace not one but two companies, and this absolutely means no disrespect to the decision made by the ad hoc committee as well as the recommendation by the Board of Governors. In fact, it is really appreciated, and their input is extremely valued. So, please don't take this to mean that I wish to change the members of the Board of Governors so they can make a decision based upon my opinion. That is really uncalled for. I feel that the Board of Governors has done an outstanding job and should continue to do so. They're very much needed in the community and provide a valuable service to the community. With this decision, however, I feel that two resident companies really are more beneficial rather than just one. If we can embrace two and help both companies, then the community is so much richer for it. I'm disappointed that my colleagues are not supporting this motion, and as maker of the motion, those are my final comments, and, Mr. Mayor, you can call for the vote.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion fails one-three.
Thank you. Do we need an affirmative motion on the other side of this, then? Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move to support the recommendation made by the Board of Governors to designate the Pacific Festival Ballet as the resident ballet of the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza.
Comments to the motion? Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
As a big supporter of the arts and especially ballet, I will support the motion.
Thank you. Any additional comments to the motion? Mr. Fox, maker of the motion? Anything further? Please vote.
Motion carries four-zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Item 8A. Public hearings with the city clerk. Please open the hearing on 8A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8A. Appellant: Michael Carey. Applicant: Singular Wireless, formerly AT&amp;T Wireless. An appeal of planning commission decision approving special use permit 2004-71184. Installation of wireless communications facility mounted on replacement Southern California Edison Light Standard. Allow encroachment within protected zone of two off-site California sycamore trees. Landmark tree permit 2005-70392 located 1051 Northwest Lake Boulevard. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. We have the applicant present, which will receive fifteen minutes and a five-minute rebuttal, and two speakers, which will receive five minutes each.
Thank you. Staff report, Senior Planner Lori Young.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gillette, and members of the city council. Before I begin my PowerPoint presentation, I'd like to bring your attention to a letter that's included in the green supplemental packet. This is a letter from Michael Carey, the appellant. He cannot be here tonight, but wishes that his comments be included as part of the record. The project consists of the installation of three antennas on a replacement streetlight pole with the equipment to be placed in an underground vault. Also, the encroachment into the protected trees zones of two sycamores to allow underground electrical conduit connection. The project is located at the corner of West Lake Boulevard and Crest Haven. Here's a view looking southwest from the northeast corner of Crest Haven and West Lake Boulevard. This is another view. The project design consists of replacing the existing SCE streetlight pole with a new thirty-five-foot-high streetlight pole, also attaching three-panel antennas on top of the pole and enclosing the antennas with a radome. The equipment will be located in an underground vault located in the public right-of-way in the landscape median between West Lake Boulevard and Oak Hollow Circle. The above equipment will include the SCE meter pedestal and a utility rack, which will be located adjacent to the vault in the landscape median. This is a photo simulation looking at the streetlight pole with the radome on top. There's another view, and the underground vault will be locating in the median there. It's a picture of the site plan. The north and east elevations. South and west elevations. The appellant's grounds of appeal and staff response. One, the installation is inconsistent with Resolution Number 97-197 with regard to the allowed height in the RPD zone, and alternative sites analysis is limited and inadequate. Staff response is that the thirty-five-foot replacement streetlight standard is consistent with the thirty-five-foot maximum height for the RPD zone. Additional alternatives were evaluated per the council direction on May 9. Two, the site intends to facilitate cellphone use for drivers on a part of West Lake Boulevard with a high frequency of traffic accidents and is adjacent to an area that has minimal physical protection from errant traffic. Staff response, traffic hazards on West Lake Boulevard do not necessarily result from the inattention of persons driving vehicles while using their cellphones. Three, local residents in the community do not support the wireless facility. The project complies with the city council Resolution 97-197, which contains the standards and guidelines for the development of wireless facilities in the city. Four, the city attorney provided inappropriate advice to the planning commission. The response, the commission was advised of the Ninth Circuit's court's decision in Sprint PCS assets versus the City of La Cañada Flint Ridge, and lack of a nexus between the installation of a facility and the appellant's concern regarding the use of cellphones while driving as a contributing factor for traffic accidents. Five, neighboring residents are concerned about further exposure to any radiation due to extensive prior cancer treatment. Response, the city's consultant has reviewed the project and finds the power levels to be emitted from site are both compliant with the federal standards and will be much lower than the maximum power levels allowed by those standards. FCC rules preempts local governments from setting RF standards. This is the council direction from the May 9 public hearing. One, conduct formal evaluation of a possible facility in the open space property located northwest of West Lake Boulevard and Crest Haven. Staff response, on August 2, 2006, the COSCA board of directors denied this request. The proposed improvements on COSCA land were considered as significant and not in keeping with natural state of the property. Additional concerns were noted in the COSCA staff report and as attachment four in your staff report. Two, provide West Lake Boulevard corridor plan for potential sites to the north, south, and in the vicinity, and to look at additional sites, including search ring evaluation size of individual sites. Response, the applicant's attorney provided a letter and West Lake Boulevard corridor plan describing potential primary coverage objectives and search ring boundaries along West Lake Boulevard. The drive test data was also provided and evaluated in this report. Three, further review alternative sites such as SCE Edison poles at northern edge of North Ranch. Staff response, Edison only allows one wireless carrier per tubular steel pole due to safety issues. The SCE pole on the east side of West Lake Boulevard, north of Canaan, is not suitable due to the hillside area located to the southwest of Brunston Court prohibiting line-of-sight advantage for coverage along West Lake Boulevard corridor area to the south. SCE poles north of West Lake and Canaan have existing wireless facilities. The second pole has Verizon, third pole Sprint Nextel is located on that. The SCE poles north and west of West Lake, Canaan do not have proper line-of-sight due to the intervening ridge line between the poles and West Lake Boulevard. Or request applicant to consider alternative utility trenching locations at the proposed site to reduce or eliminate encroachment within the drip lines of two landmark trees. The alternative would require trenching across West Lake Boulevard, not recommended by staff because it would disrupt traffic flow and conflict with the city policy against trenching on streets that have received recent overlay. The project as proposed has minimal effect on the trees. Staff recommendation, to deny the appeal, thereby upholding the decision of the planning commission to approve SUP 2004-71184 and LTP 2005-70392 based upon the findings and subject to the conditions set forth in planning commission Resolution Numbers 8-2006PC and That concludes my remarks. Also here tonight is Jonathan Kramer, who can answer any technical questions, and Mark Town representing COSCA.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Young? Thank you. Any questions of any of the staff members? Thank you. We have the letter from the appellant. Everyone has that? Okay. Then, I have, I have three cards on this item, one to speak and two available for questions only. So, I'll start with the applicant. Applicant, Singular, Adrienne Panatino? I'm sorry. Let me get, first let me turn there. Okay. And, I'm sorry, how did you pronounce your last name?
Patnod.
Patnod. Okay, thank you. You have, as the applicant, you have fifteen minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette, members of the council. My name's Adrienne Patnod. I'm a resident of Ventura, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Singular Wireless on behalf of Singular Wireless Services. In the six months that have passed since your council last considered this item, Singular has been working to address the issues and questions that were raised by your council during the May 9 meeting. Your council requested that Singular review alternate site locations, specifically the COSCA property to the north and the SCE tower locations off of Canaan Road. The staff report outlines the outcome of the efforts that were made with regard to proposing a facility on the COSCA property to the north. Singular coordinated and attended multiple meetings with representatives from various city departments, including Planning, Public Works, and COSCA, to identify a potential design solution. Singular completed survey work and drawings and submitted a formal request and proposal to COSCA for consideration. Singular extended a significant amount of time and resources pursuing the COSCA location. We are grateful for the time and consideration provided by COSCA and the other city departments, but in the end, these efforts provided unsuccessful, or proved unsuccessful. During a June 2 site visit with Singular's RF engineers and Mr. Kramer, it was reconfirmed that the SCE poles located off of Canaan Road will not meet the objective of providing service to the area of Westlake Boulevard where the facility is currently proposed. Staff has also addressed SCE's policy regarding multiple carriers on transmission poles. In addition to these locations, Singular reviewed seven other candidate locations as outlined in the alternate site summary previously submitted for review. During the May 9 meeting, questions were raised regarding the need for the site at this location. On August 29, Singular conducted a live radio test to measure the existing signal strength along Westlake Boulevard. A copy of the drive test data has been submitted and reviewed by Mr. Kramer and staff. The drive test data demonstrates the current lack of coverage in the area. During the May 9 meeting, council also requested that Singular provide a map of the Westlake corridor showing approximate ring and site locations. This map was provided to staff on August 31, and it should be reiterated that this exhibit shows the approximate locations of where sites may be needed at some point in the future to provide service, as stated in Mr. Geistad's accompanying letter. In his appeal, Mr. Carey cites traffic safety along Westlake Boulevard as a significant concern. Although there is no correlation between the proposed Singular facility and the traffic safety concerns raised by Mr. Carey, Singular met with Mr. Carey on November 3 to discuss his concerns and to discuss the possibility of Singular proposing additional landscape material within the median to help address some of the traffic safety concerns. The neighbors specifically requested that the shrub myoporum be installed along the median to address the Westlake Boulevard's safety and screening issues. On November 7, I met with Hans Faber and Pam Lee Appold to discuss the potential for proposing additional landscape material within the right-of-way to help alleviate some of these concerns. While Mr. Faber indicated that the city would not be open to the installation of myoporum, the city would be open to Singular installing an additional five trees within the median to address the safety issue, as well as some additional photina to assist with the screening. Singular is willing to install the additional landscaping, which will be subject to planning review and approval per Conditions 12 and 13 of the Planning Commission's Resolution approving the project. During the site visit with Mr. Carey on November 3, questions were raised about site alternatives and justification for needing the site. Last Wednesday, we had a conference call with the appellant and Jim Hollister, Singular's RF manager, to respond to those questions. We shared with him the challenges Singular has had in identifying a site location in this area, and why this location is technically and logistically the only feasible location we have for the site. Mr. Hollister is here this evening and is available to respond to any additional questions that you might have. Singular has gone to great efforts to address the concerns and comments of both the neighbors and the council. And although Singular is not required to demonstrate that the proposed location is the only viable site location, we are confident that we have identified the best solution, given the multitude of constraints that impact the siting of wireless facilities in this area. We urge you to support the Planning Commission's approval of the project and staff's recommendation to deny the appeal before you this evening. I thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Patnado, Ms. Bildalepin?
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Patnado. The map that I have in front of me shows that the area which is in question this evening has good coverage to weak coverage. Is that correct?
The drive test data shows that currently along Westlake Boulevard and in the Crest Haven area, the existing coverage is very poor to nonexistent.
That would be the blue area?
No, it would be the areas that are shown in red, or where there is no data at all appearing.
Are we looking at the same map?
No.
Okay, I'm looking at this map.
Oh, you're looking at the propagation map. The drive test data map is actually even more accurate than the propagation map, but I can respond to any questions that you might have about either. I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to the drive test data.
No, I wasn't.
I think both maps indicate that the level of service in the area is poor.
That is a map in the supplemental packet, not in the staff report, on page 9. Thank you. Okay, so you're saying it is poor?
Correct.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you were looking at, okay. No further questions at the other end? All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our speaker cards. I have two for questions only. Jim Hollister, comments only for Singular, and Richard Campbell, questions only. We have no other speakers. Staff response to any of the comments?
I'd like to respond to the issue of the two maps and provide perhaps some clarification. There are two maps.
Please do, and identify yourself on the microphone, please.
Thank you. I'm Jonathan Kramer. I'm your RF engineer.
Thank you.
There are two maps that are part of the whole project in the package before you. The first is the map that was referred to just a few minutes ago by the council member. That is a computer-generated propagation map that makes certain presumptions about the coverage in the area. That was the beginning map. We'd asked them, as had you, to come back with more accurate information, so the company conducted the drive test. That is the map. And I'll hold it up. It's the one that's basically dots. It's page 25 of the staff package, but it's the one that has the colored dots on the roads. This map, the drive test map, is actually produced by measuring the actual signal levels along the street segments. So it is a more accurate representation of the signal strengths in the area. And my interpretation of this as an RF engineer is that the signal levels do vary from, they're actually not even, in some places, good, down to very poor. The numbers on this map correlate back to FCC minimums, and therefore, that's why the minus 112, for example, that's just above the FCC's minimum. Much of the signal strength in this area is relatively close to that minimum, and that is the underpinning of the technical justification. So we have, in the package tonight, really what is the most accurate portrayal of the signal strength in the area, and that's the drive test map.
Any questions, Ms. Bildalepin?
Mr. Kramer, could the signal vary during the daytime at all different? Could it depend on the weather, for example? Could it change, or is this a constant?
It's not a constant. It will change due to a number of characteristics. For example, if there's moisture in the air, the signal strength will actually decrease. And that's just a function of the frequencies involved and the relationship of those frequencies to the, literally to the size of water molecules in the air. So these tests were done on relatively clear days, so this is actually towards the upper limit of what the signal strengths would be in the area. It would be worse during rainstorms, for example.
But the point here is, though, we do have coverage.
There is coverage in some portions of the street segments. For example, if you look north of Crest Haven, which is shown on this map as somewhat of an upside-down Omega symbol, that's the intersection there. Just north of there, the signal strength is actually below the FCC minimum. And that's the minus 112. Actually, it's about 113, minus 113 decibels. Modern telephones, modern wireless telephones are very sensitive, and they can work, in some cases, below the FCC's minimum signal strength. But for this purpose, there is a bright line test in terms of signal strength and the FCC minimums. And that segment north of Crest Haven that is just shown as a solid black line is an indication of why this particular site, this particular location, is important to this particular carrier.
Anything further? Any additional questions of staff? Any additional clarification? Okay. The applicant Singular has another five minutes, should you choose to use it. Mr. Pat, or Ms. Patnado? Okay, you don't have to. I just want to make sure you have the opportunity. Mr. Prescott, excuse me, just a second. Okay, forget that. And we do not have an appellant. The appellant at this time would be offered an additional five minutes for rebuttal, as we don't have an appellant present.
I would point out, Mr. Mayor, that the written material submitted by the appellant does have on the last page a written rebuttal to presumed points that Singular might make. So it is part of the record, although it's not a formal verbal rebuttal to the exact testimony that was given.
Thank you for that, then, Mr. Prescott. Okay, then. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Council discussion. Mrs. Irwin?
Yeah, I just want to comment, the staff report is very thorough, and Singular worked, obviously, with the neighbors on the landscaping issues. And we had a number of concerns. All of them were answered. I, you know, on all these cell cases, we have very little discretion, and I just don't see that we have any other option in this case. I think the city will be subject to legal action if we do not approve this cell site. And as far as the drive test data, I can attest, even though I'm not talking on my cellphone without a Bluetooth, that there is absolutely no coverage on Westlake Boulevard in this area. No matter what time of day, all calls are dropped, all Singular calls are dropped. So I am going to move approval of this cell site.
We have a motion for approval. Have us the motion. Fox?
I just want to make sure that in Mr. Carey's rebuttal in the green packet, that we are including the landscape plan that he discusses. Just, I want to confirm with staff that the conditions of the approval include that landscaping plan. In a lot of Mr. Carey's letter, he talks about the landscaping on the berm, and so we want to make sure that that gets included. And then, the other issue is the second item, and that's the continuing coverage with respect to linking these. There probably needs to be some plan with respect to that, and we're going to come right back, you know, where we started. I don't know if that's a part from this hearing. Okay, city attorney says it's a part. We're going to be right back, you know, where we started with that. But I think Councilmember Irwin's comments are, first, that we don't have a lot of discretion, but more importantly, if you read Mr. Carey's letter, that's really what we're looking for. We're looking for, in this case, Singular to work well with the residents. You did that, and I think it comes through in Mr. Carey's letter, that we exhausted all the alternatives, which is what folks are looking for. I went out and talked to those neighbors the last time we had the hearing. They're very reasonable folks. They're very reasonable. They're clearly not NIMBY-type folks where it's not in my backyard. They just want to make sure that we exhausted a really good alternative process prior to moving forward on this, and I think that we've done that. And I think moving forward with the landscape plan will address a lot of the needs of the other folks there. So I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Bildalepin, I'm sorry. Did you have, Ms. Bildalepin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also state for the record that it is very clear in Mr. Carey's letter that he and his neighbors are still very much opposed to this installation. The, in the testimony presented tonight, it is not, I am not convinced that this is a coverage versus capacity issue. There is coverage, albeit poor to weak. And as such, the City Council, according to its resolution, has the authority and the discretion to deny based on necessity. There is no need for coverage because it is existent. Capacity is the issue here, and therefore, I will not support the motion.
The, I have spoken on a number of occasions to the alternative site analysis, and I've read the materials. I don't know what else can be done to try and address this as far as the available alternatives. It just, there's a side of me that just feels when a group of residents feels so strongly that they don't want something in their neighborhood, that we as a city council should have the authority to support that feeling and protect them from having that kind of encroachment under their neighborhood. However, with the number of levels of government getting involved in this system and dictating that every one of these companies has the right to proceed and has the right to install their systems to provide coverage in an area, I'm really at a loss as to what we as a city council can legitimately do without exposing the rest of the city and the rest of the residents to litigation. So it's with a great deal of reluctance, great deal of reluctance, that I'm going to support the motion. Mrs. Irwin, maker of the motion.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, there was a request for landscaping, and then there was an altered request. So I mean, the motion would be for the altered request.
Okay, is the clerk clear on the motion?
Motion carries three, one.
Thank you. Item 8B. On the TEFRA hearing, would the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFRA, public hearing for issuance of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bond for Shadows Apartments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. I have one speaker card and that speaker is allowed five minutes.
Thank you. Our Housing and Redevelopment Manager, Russ Watson, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight's item pertains specifically to a public hearing, the TEFRA hearing, related to the proposed issuance of private activity tax-exempt bonds, multifamily housing revenue bonds for the acquisition rehabilitation of the Shadows apartment. The slide you have in front of you is the location of the project, 1949 Los Feliz Drive. The Shadows was built in mid-1980s, originally financed with mortgage revenue bonds issued by the Redevelopment Agency. Bonds were refinanced in 1997. The project contains 148 units, 56 one-bedroom and 92 two-bedroom. As a result of our financing of this project, there are 30% of the units or 45 units currently affordable. Thirty of those are very low at 50% of area median income. Fifteen units are at low with rents restricted at 60% of area median income. Income of eligible residents cannot exceed 80% of area median income. There are currently 103 units rented at market rate and the affordability restrictions for the 45 units ends in 2027. Shadows TC investors, we'll refer to them as Westpac, proposes to acquire the project. Westpac management currently manages the Shadows apartments and has so for a number of years. There will be, require a variety of funding sources necessary to move this project forward, including the issuance of or the sale of tax credits, mortgage revenue bonds, an application for state home funds, a proposed application by the agency for help funds and additional redevelopment assistance. The financial assistance has not been brought forward to the agency yet. Westpac will engage a partner, a nonprofit partner for the project. The project benefits would include an extension of the existing 45 units for an additional at least 55 years of affordability, impose new restrictions for 55 years on 102 of the market rate, of the current market rate units. One unit would be left as a, available as a management unit. Total project would have 147 affordable units. Just a note, of those 147 units, 30 would be at, continue at the very low rate with 50% AMI rent structure. 117 would be at low income. What is a TEFRA? It's Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act requires the applicable elected representative of the jurisdiction in which a project is to be financed with private activity bonds to adopt a resolution after a public hearing. The bonds are proposed to be issued by the California State Communities Development Authority. This is a public entity operating within the state pursuant to state law. It's an entity that was supported by the League of Cities. The City of Thousand Oaks joined through a joint powers agreement in 1998. There have been bonds issued by state, California statewide community development authority for projects within Thousand Oaks. One of them that comes to mind is the Hacena de Feliz project. And the California statewide communities development authority can only issue bonds following a TEFRA resolution. It's also required a result to issue or to receive a bond allocation through the California Debt Limit Authority. And this resolution would authorize California State Communities Development Authority to issue up to $21 million with the bonds. The actual bond amount would be determined to that. That is absolutely necessary for the project. The TEFRA, should it be approved, is valid for one year. The financing, the bonded indebtedness is not secured by any form of taxation. The bond is not an obligation of the city or California State Community Development Authority. Bonds would be repaid solely from the project revenues, i.e. rent payments. And this action tonight does not commit the city or Redevelopment Agency to any financial assistance. Staff's recommendation is conduct a public hearing and approve the required resolution. And I know Mr. Ortiz, representing Westpac, is in the audience if there have been questions.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Any questions of staff? Mrs. Irwin?
I certainly see the benefit of increasing the restriction for 55 years and increasing the number of units from 103 to 147. I wanted to know when with our other nonprofits, Many Mansions and Area Housing, they often take these properties and improve them. Is there a plan with Westpac to improve the property?
As part of the total financing, there is an obligation to rehabilitate the property. I believe it's about $2.5 million worth of rehabilitation funds. It's part of the total package. The property itself is in actually pretty good shape. There is a needs assessment, although it has not been delivered to staff yet to determine the actual level of rehabilitation. But that process is required as a result of the funding.
And you have here that Westpac will partner with a nonprofit. Is it probably Many Mansions or Area Housing or is it unknown at this point?
At this point, it has not been identified which nonprofit would be partnered with Westpac.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Watson. If you could help me out here. Currently, we have 45 units which are affordable in the 148 apartment units in this building, correct?
Yes, 30% of the total project.
And should this all be approved and go through, there would be 130 affordable units, all of which would be divided into very low, low, and so forth?
There'd be 147 with one unit reserved as the manager unit. So essentially, 100% affordable.
Okay. I'm looking at the fourth paragraph here on page 11 of our supplemental report. Okay, so 147. Now...
I see where you're looking in it appears to be a typo. Should be 147.
Is it a typo? It's 147? Okay.
Well, actually, that would, what's being designated is 30 units as very low and 117 units as low. The combined total, that would be 147 units.
I see. It's highly, would you say that is highly unusual for someone, a private party, to come forth to request this sort of assistance in order to make 100% of units affordable?
I don't know that it's highly unusual. I don't know that City of Thousand Oaks has partnered to this degree. Should we partner? Although that financial assistance has not been brought forward to the Redevelopment Agency. We have not partnered with a private party under this financing structure. This financing structure is available to either a private party or a nonprofit and does require a nonprofit to participate in the financing structure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something else? Mr. Watson, Westpac currently manages this property?
Correct.
As you, as you research and what have you, do we have, do we have any history on the management style that's gone on at this property, activities? Is it, is it the kind of management that we've seen exhibited by some of the nonprofit partners like the Area Housing Authority and Many Mansions and the control over behavior and recommendations for minimizing activity and deviant activity in the, in the project? Or do we have any history at this location?
I have no personal knowledge of particular problems that exist. We do have oversight certification of the existing 45 units to the extent that they meet the requirements of the prior bond issue. But I am not aware of any specific issue, outstanding issues or ongoing history or problems related to the management of this property.
Okay. When we do, when we do something like this, I realize it's rare. As part of the due diligence research on a project, are the emergency service providers contacted to ask about history? Is that, first of all, is it allowed? And if it's allowed, is it done?
We have not done it for this one.
I'm sorry. Who?
I wanted to also answer your question. I mean, part of this hearing, especially tonight, is really just a matter of whether this type of, that the project itself, it's different in the sense that it's already in existence because the apartment's already there, is whether the council is willing to approve the private bonds, that we say yes, okay to this. And really, what you're saying is that you're proving of the idea that there's going to be all of these units, which are already in existence, would become affordable. In a sense, that's what you're, you're giving your blessing to tonight by doing this. In terms of whether we're going to, whether the city or the agency will participate in the financing, isn't the question before you tonight. And all of those issues may be relevant more to that discussion in terms of what is the history of our partner and the management style and does it agree with how the city would participate? So some of those questions would be relevant more to that discussion than what's really the sort of limited question in front of you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. And I understand that from my perspective, though, I want Mr. Watson to know when this, if this comes back, when this comes back. Those are the kinds of questions that I'm going to be looking at because we've got, we don't have a lot of experience with a, with private organization doing what, for the most part, has been done in this community with nonprofit organizations. And the optimum word in this whole conversation is profit. And when you add a private corporation with a profit motive and a profit need, it's oftentimes very difficult for them to compete with nonprofits. Yet this organization has seen fit. They obviously have penciled it out. They think they can go through. And the one big piece missing is how much public participation are they going to require, going to ask for at some point? And before that happens or before that's agreed to, at least from my perspective, we're going to want to know an awful lot about this person, about this, this organization. Okay? Mr. Mike Ortiz is present. Mr. Ortiz is available for questions only. Offered the opportunity to speak. Nope. Pardon. Mrs. Bill Delapena?
Mr. Ortiz? Good evening, Mr. Ortiz. A question. The, if you could just elaborate quickly as to what triggered your request to the city?
Seeing structured to, in terms of providing affordable housing, one of the key components is bond financing. And part of the bond financing is a requirement for a TEFRA hearing. It obligates the city under no obligation to do anything other than just to give its blessing to the bond issuance, but it doesn't obligate you to anything else. And it's just sort of a formal procedure.
And why would you entertain this idea?
We're in the process of forming the financing structures to come back to you with that. And just as a quick side comment, in terms of the nonprofit partner is, we're proud to announce that tomorrow we're seeking approval from Cabrillo Economic Development to be our nonprofit joint venture partner.
So you're doing this out of the goodness of your heart?
Partially and partially, you know, we're expanding our division of affordable housing. We feel it's a nice combination to help out and also to serve the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions, further discussion? Being done at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Swill of the counsel. Mrs. Bill Delapena?
I would move approval of the recommendation to conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance. And also would like to state that it is very important to know, for everyone to know, that this does not obligate the city financially in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Any comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Item nine, Department Reports. Operation Financial Review of Fire Services. The Assistant City Manager, Mrs. Papastias.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The City of Thousand Oaks is provided fire service by the Ventura County Fire Protection District, which was established in 1928. There are five other Ventura County cities also served by this district. As outlined in the report that you have, there are nine fire stations serving the City of Thousand Oaks. This district receives funding from Thousand Oaks residents via a portion of the property taxes they pay. In 1987 and 1993, the city did a review of the amount of revenues collected in comparison to the expenditures incurred. In 1993, an outside consultant was also used to review the type and level of fire services provided to the city. The city has conducted a review of its contracted police services every five to six years. Such a review has evaluated expenditures and operations and compared the Thousand Oaks cost to those of cities that provide their own local police services. Since the past fire reviews were so valuable, it is recommended that the city continue to do these types of evaluations on a similar schedule to those of the police department review of every five to six years. Therefore, it is requested that the city council authorize staff to solicit requests for proposal for a financial and operational review of the fire services provided to Thousand Oaks. It is proposed that the RFP will be issued around December 1st with a deadline of February 2nd, 2007. Staff will hopefully bring this back to the council in about March for the reward of a contract, including a budget adjustment when the amount is more defined and confirmed. This evening, we have Candace Hong, Finance Director, with us to also answer questions. And Fire Chief Roper and Chief, our local chief, LaPlante, are also here in the audience to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Mrs. Bill Delapena?
So by February 2007, we may have an idea as to who would conduct this review?
Right. We will solicit an RFP to get consultants and at that time, we would do an evaluation and bring back to you someone that we would recommend for that. And at that time, we would also have a better idea on the cost.
Why is this being done with the fire department and not also with the police?
Because you recently did it with the police department just a few months ago, I understand, or within the last year.
Yes, we did. And we were concerned about the increases in cost. Is that something that we may see in this particular case?
Well, we'll do a complete financial review of what we pay and the revenues we receive along with different operational issues.
And what exactly triggered this? I know you mentioned, you mentioned the history and the... I know you mentioned, you mentioned the history and the concern about the distribution of funds and whatnot and taxes, but is, what exactly triggered this?
It's the fact that it's been about six years since your last review and that you had just conducted the police department review. And staff felt that it was about time to review that, not only from the financial perspective, but also to continue the dialogue on the operational services we receive.
And is this done with the blessing of the fire district? Or how does the fire district feel about this?
Yeah, we've been in contact with the fire district. They've talked to us about the report and the RFP. They've been privy to that and are assisting us, and they look at it as an opportunity for us to also discuss services.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitnick, City Manager, has a comment?
As a clarification, it's actually been thirteen years since the last review of fire service. So it's prudent and necessary to do it every five years or so. So it's been a long, long time.
Thank you. Mrs. Bill Delapena, go ahead.
I wanted to ask a question of Chief Roper, if possible.
I was going to introduce Chief Roper.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions of staff? Mr. Fox.
Yeah, just want to pick up on what Mr. Mitnick talked a little bit about. I was actually part of that nineteen eighty-seven group, if I'm not mistaken. We do need to do, I don't know, I know we're better with police than we are with fire with respect to these periodic reviews, but I think we need to make it a standing issue so we don't get where we are today, where it's been thirteen years since we've taken a look at this. Seems to me we should, as we look at police, then maybe the, you know, in the oncoming year, we look at fire and do it in a, in a five-year interval. And that way, we stay up to speed with that, if we just make that a standing review as part of either budget process or whatever, whatever you think is appropriate, Mr. Mitnick.
And I suggest, Mr. Fox, that we'll be headed into a, in the not-too-distant future, goal-setting session. Certainly a perfect topic for that. Got it? Okay, any additional questions of staff? Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Bob Roper, who is the chief of the Ventura County Fire Protection District. The Assistant City Manager went over, under the organizational structure that's in place, fire services, emergency services of that type, under the fire, under the fire department, are provided to the city under a district. It's a district of the county of Ventura. The fire chief directs that one of his command officers, Chief LaPlante, functions in the day-to-day capacity as the fire chief for the City of Thousand Oaks. But the chief, the overall responsibility for fire protection, after it leaves the council's responsibility, falls to Chief Roper. And Chief Roper is with us this evening. Good evening, Chief. This would be an opportunity to say hello, Bob.
Okay. Good evening. Bob Roper, Fire Chief, Ventura County Fire Protection District. Thank you for inviting me here tonight to entertain this discussion. The fire district prides itself in trying to serve each of the cities as well as the unincorporated areas of the county. We conduct internal reviews of our services, trying constantly to improve those. One of those is being tomorrow, we operate, our new dispatch center goes live, which is a big improvement over some of the functions we have currently today. But the fire district is in full support of the city's effort to conduct this review. We open our books and our, all of our operations for review by the outside consultant. And I think through that open process, we will learn some things on how we can improve services to the city. And it'll be an education process during that. We remain open to it.
Thank you very much, Chief. Are there any questions of the chief? You want to start? Mrs. Bill Delapena.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief Roper. What sort of impact would this have on the fire district? Should the city decide to form its own fire department?
Oh, that's a very open-ended question that, there's a long process with LAFCO, and there's not too many case studies where cities have taken a service back from a district, as well as, over the last couple of years, Santa Paula and Ventura also looked at trying to take their services as a city service and give back to the fire district. So it's a very, I'll say, long process, and I would have to defer to a LAFCO representative to walk you through all the guidelines of that process.
Does this sort of request tonight come as a surprise to you, or was it expected?
No, we've been working with the city manager's office. We are quite aware of the request. We are quite aware of what we went through in eighty-seven and also ninety-three. So there is no surprise at this.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox.
I think I just want to point out that, at least speaking from this council member's standpoint, there's absolutely no interest whatsoever in starting our own fire department. And I think the chiefs and the staff is well aware of that. So I just don't want that to go undiscussed. This is a periodic review that we should be doing on a regular basis, both with our police and fire services, to make sure that we're providing the highest level of service from a city's perspective. And also, I think council needs to be aware of the amount of money that we're adding into the county and the fire protection district. I think if you read the staff report, there's a long history of us actually contributing to other areas of the county. And so I think council needs to be aware of how much and to what degree. Also offers us an opportunity to sit down with Chief Roper and staff and talk about our fire protection service and our emergency medical service that we have here in the City of Thousand Oaks. So this is something we should be doing, we should have been doing, maybe every five years. And it's something that'll be good, as the chief says, both for the fire service and the chief and the staff and the city. Chief, also, you don't come to, you get a chance to come here every afternoon, but I want to just tell you thanks, both professionally and from the standpoint here in the council of really the great job that you and your staff does. We recently had the fire station open house. I went by one of the stations, but it was a little early. But hopefully that catches on to be kind of a Fire Service Day type thing that we have here in Thousand Oaks. But we've had some fairly large incidents over the last couple of years, and you and your staff have done a great job in working not just here in Thousand Oaks, but with, certainly with LA County and LA City. And we're very much appreciative of your leadership and the efforts that you provide for the districts. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Additional comments? At this point, I'd like to comment, as a retired public safety professional, I have nothing but commendation and praise for the service given the residents of the City of Thousand Oaks and Ventura County Fire Protection District. And over the last few years, as the district has grown and modernized and upgraded, one of the things, small thing, but I think it's significant, putting a face on the, actual face on the, on the department through their engine companies participating in National Night Out. As Councilmember Fox mentioned, the open house at the fire station. Those are things that we find more often in municipal fire departments than we do in a large regional agency. But I know that you and your staff are working with us and have never turned us down. So this is, the timing of this, as we would any major operation within the city, operating department. The timeliness of this is right. There are no issues. We look forward to working with this, and we have a responsibility to know what are our costs. And we have those with the police department, we have them with Public Works, we have them with everyone else. I would also look to see in the area of emergency medical care, the three legs on that stool, police, fire, and EMS, where it's going. And that's, it's through analyses like these that we get that kind of information, get it on a timely basis. So from my perspective, thank you to you and all of the men and women of the Ventura County Fire Protection District and the exceptional job you do for the residents of our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mitnick, you head it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Chief Roper, just to also clarify, there's no agenda or attempt to take over the fire department. And council will recall, this was discussed in goal-setting that the council had a while ago, and was listed that we were going to go through and review, police services, fire services, et cetera. And staff has been responsive in having done part of that. This is the next step. So it's just part of the overall puzzle, if you will.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thanks for coming down tonight. Okay. Pleasure to the council. Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move that we approve the recommendation to authorize staff to solicit RFPs for consulting to conduct a operational and financial review of the fire service provided to the City of Thousand Oaks by the Ventura County Fire Protection District.
Thank you. We have a motion. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item ten, Redevelopment Agency Reports. We have none. Item eleven, Committee Commission Board Reports. Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission Appointment. In Dr. Glancy's absence, Mr. Mark Watkins, Public Works Director. Mr. Watkins.
Thank you, Mayor Gillette. Members of the City Council, the week before last, John Halliwell, the city's traffic engineer, and our primary staff to the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission sat in on the interviews with Councilmember Glancy. They interviewed, I believe, it was twelve or fourteen applicants for the vacancy on the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission. I heard from both of Dr. Glancy and Mr. Halliwell that the quality of the applicants was absolutely superb. They were both thrilled with the number of people that applied and with the qualifications of those that did apply. With that, Dr. Glancy did his follow-up and is recommending the appointment of Joel Price to the Transportation Advisory Commission. And so with that, I'd like for council to consider the recommendation of Councilmember Glancy and appoint Joel Price to the Traffic Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Questions of staff? Being none, Mrs. Irwin.
I will move the recommendation of Councilmember Glancy.
Thank you. I have a motion. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item eleven B. Community, excuse me, Community Events Endowment Fund Associate Analyst, Gina Covell. And with us this evening is the Chair, David Mead. Mrs. Covell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Funding Review Committee met in October to review forty-seven grant applications. And as you said, Chair of the Committee, David Mead, is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mead. Welcome.
Community Funding Review Committee, I'm pleased to present this recommendation. I'd also like to recognize a few of the other committee members that are here with us. We had a meeting tonight on the Community Enhancement Program and reviewed those applications. With regard to the Community Events Endowment Fund Grant, as the council is aware, the grant consists of a hundred thousand dollars, of which eighty-five thousand dollars is considered by the committee for award. That grant is broken up into two components, arts and cultural events, which gets two-thirds of that grant amount, and then sports and other events, which gets one-third of that grant amount. We had forty-seven applicants this year requesting approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars. Obviously, it'd be great to be able to fund all of those applications at the amounts requested. However, we have to winnow them down to our allotted dollar amount. There were two applications that did not meet grant criteria, one for a event that was going to occur outside of the city by a non-city group, and the other one seeking funding for purchase of equipment that didn't really fall within an event-type program. With regard to the remaining forty-five applications, we are pleased to present our recommendation to the council for an award as to those forty-five applications for the amounts set forth in Attachment A for the total of amount of eighty-five thousand, broken up into the two groupings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Questions of Mr. Mead? Looks good. Thank you very much, Mr. Mead.
Thank you very much.
Council. Mrs. Irwin.
I will go ahead and move the recommendation of the committee. And as always, Mr. Mead and committee members, we really, really appreciate the time and effort that you put into this. And we know it's always a very difficult job with the limited funds. So with that, I will move the recommendation.
I have a motion. Comments to the motion? Mrs. Bill Delapena.
Thank you. I would like to thank the committee very much for your hard work and dedication to try to be fair with the distribution of the funds. As Councilmember Irwin stated, it is not easy when you have so much competition, but you always make very good decisions. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional comments to the motion? I'd just like to add my appreciation, Mr. Mead, to you and your committee. And I have a real appreciation for the amount of time, effort, and energy that goes into this process. And what you do, first of all, the people that came on the council long before I did that saw the vision and started putting a little bit away to be able to do this, to have money, I think is a testament to the quality of life in our community, where these needs were recognized. We probably never have enough money to fund everybody a hundred percent. But then the process, and the process is all-important, where the, de-politicizing the process and giving the discussion and the recommendation authority to a group of objective, third-party residents who care deeply about their community, give us something to work for, work from, is very beneficial to the process, to the people of our city. So thank you very much. Mrs. Irwin, make her the motion. Any additional comment? None? Please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Eleven C, we have already covered. Twelve, Council Questions and Recommendations, Follow-Up Reports on Meetings and Conferences, Channel Counties Division Meeting. Mrs. Irwin. Twelve A, one.
Yes, Councilmember Glancy and myself attended the quarterly Channel Counties Meeting. It was held at the Reagan Library, and we were also accompanied by Nina Leva and Deputy Public Works Director Spurgeon, and we heard a lecture on emergency preparedness. And the rest you can read in the report. So my recommendation is to receive report.
I have a motion to receive and file. Comments? None? Please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item thirteen, City Manager. Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up, a number of speakers expressed, excuse me, a number of residents expressed concern about the future of Canal Valley Days, the parade, and the rodeo. Staff is aware of those concerns, and Cynthia Ross, the assistant to the city manager, will respond to those speakers and to better understand their concerns and go through potential options. I would like to remind council that the challenge with this issue is significantly dwindling numbers of attendees at both the parade and at the rodeo. Numbers are way down, and there's also, with that comes dwindling funding. And that's why the Qantas Club and the Rotary Club and so on are having difficulties funding those aspects of Canal Valley Days. Nevertheless, staff will follow up with those residents to see what can be done, and will provide information to council. I believe that's it by way of follow-up. As for upcoming items, we'd like to, oh, I would like to mention to council and the public that the city has received a number of phone calls, emails, and inquiries with respect to the Time Warner Cable channel lineup switch. For those at home, you'll notice the different channel lineup and so on. Residents are encouraged to work with Time Warner, to understand the changes, and so on. If residents are concerned that they're not getting the service they should get, they are encouraged to contact Mike Hauser here with the City of Thousand Oaks at four-four-nine-two-seven-four-three.
Would you repeat that number, please, slowly?
Again, it's, I'm sorry, four-four-nine-two-seven-four-three. That's Mike Hauser in the TOTV department. Upcoming council meetings, the next meeting will be on November twenty-eighth. It's also the date of the State of the City address that the mayor will be providing that after noon, beginning at eleven-thirty a.m. at the Los Robles Golf Course. That evening at the council meeting, we will have a hearing, the appeal of the Duvin Project. That's on the twenty-eighth. And we also have a public hearing- And we also have a public hearing dealing with the fire sprinkler ordinance. And that's it by way of City Manager follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, closed session. Madam City Attorney, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. Mrs. Bill Delapena.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Dubin Project, is that, that's among Clefman? Okay.
That's correct.
About the Conejo Valley Days Parade, is it possible to have a report on the agenda to see how we can assist in this endeavor? Because it is very important to many of our residents and, as was stated tonight, the heritage of this community. And is that something that we can discuss as, the council as a whole? Can it be put on the agenda?
It can. I'm not sure we'd be ready by the 28th, but we can bring it back.
How about the first meeting in December, then?
We can take a look at that.
Okay. I think it's very important that we respond as a, the council as a whole. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Item, item 14, closed session. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff and members of the public. The council will be going into closed session, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. The case is Chateau Holdings versus California Department of Transportation, as well as the City of Thousand Oaks, case number SC048101. And this is pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9 subsection A. And there will not be anything to report out at the end of this closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Then at this time, I will adjourn this meeting in memory of the following individuals. Nicholas Jekka, son of city employee Wayne Jekka. Nicholas is survived by his mother, Jolene, stepmother Laura, and his grandparents, Joe and Rosalie Mostelardo, members of the Thousand Oaks Police Department, volunteers in policing. His aunt, Leslie Tarrell, works for the City Clerks Department. Sheriff's Deputy Robert Burnett. Deputy Burnett spent his early years training in Thousand Oaks. He was an Iraqi war veteran who served two tours of duty and was assigned to the Courts Division, working court security. Dee Harzen. Dee Harzen was one of our beloved City Welcome Desk volunteers. She lived in Thousand Oaks for 47 years and served as a docent for the Ronald Reagan and Stagecoach Museums. Charles Dude Eds, father of City Clerk Linda Lawrence. Charles, a Korean War veteran, was a longtime resident of Ventura County. He retired after 30 years of service with the fire department for both Oxnard and Point Magoo Naval Air Base. And finally, Don Pruner. Don was one of the very first ambulance service providers. He brought the first paramedics to Ventura County in 1963. He and his wife Jackie owned Conejo Ambulance Service and Conejo Sickroom Supply. Don was a successful businessman who dedicated his career to emergency service. We adjourn in memory and honor of all of these individuals and to our next regularly scheduled meeting.